What do you see when you go to the used car deal on the sign?
As is.
I think that's exactly what they're going to do.
This is correct.
I think we do, I think we have a responsibility to take it, but not to take it on free.
Yeah, and so what we'll do, I would suggest then that maybe this actually be continued in table until such time as.
Get the data. Who's gonna do that?
I get a paving company to do the pavement, I think would be most appropriate.
Well, we need the painting, and then if there's any street lighting.
Landscape and street lights.
And keep in mind.
Inventory, condition assessment.
Keep in mind that picking the Pope we bought on West Lakes with the street lighting, we got a mess down there according to our electrical people, so. I hope this time somebody will look at it to tell us how bad, well, we know one thing, somebody was shooting the lights out over at Faraway Office Park. So God only knows what kind of condition the lighting is over there.
Yeah, and one of you's gonna wonder, I don't know how much money, Stephen, do you have allocated or segregated how much money has been collected as an additional amount in Town Lakes Office Park over the years?
It'd be two thousand and nine.
No, I don't think it's.
It'd be easy to figure out.
Yeah, and we can figure it out, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
And I guess the question is, has the district been performing any maintenance functions over there during that period of time? That was the whole idea.
I wouldn't say it was eighty dollars per ERU a year, seventy dollars per ERU in their squad over there. Eighty equivalents, something like that.
So we're talking sixty, forty, three hundred and seven thousand dollars a year maybe?
Six, seven thousand dollars a year, so ten years would be sixty thousand bucks that would've gone into an account. I don't know if we're adding admin and, I just can't picture what I know of Town Lakes that one penny was spent on maintenance.
And Nick, it's back to the issue, it's a property, it should be utilized for the purposes of.
Oh, I totally agree, yeah, that would be a.
Yeah, well, I mean, all that money is.
Or ante into the game.
Yeah, all that money is separate, it's a separate fund, yes.
Okay, I think we need to know both of those, what the money is and what the.
Condition is.
Condition is, and not only the condition of just the roads, but anything we're taking over, which would be the street signs and streetlights.
So Tony, that tables are moved to in, for the two and four?
Yes, two and four, and I would suggest that those be table to the board meeting when the reports come back to the board, that everything's done at the same time.
Okay.
On the cleaner phase two, we can go to that C three, if this, if this gets finalized and wrapped up.
If?
This would, this would resolve the pending permit challenge. Because this would provide a way for the district to access, and that's the key, it's ingress and egress for the existing easement that exists. And that's what the, this would provide, that this was one of the issues that, options that was provided way back when, when. The lake maintenance easement is the area that is not the full twenty feet in width above water, that's because the control elevation has actually gone up further off the bank. There may have been some other, I guess, erosion or deterioration. But my understanding is, and Danny corrected me if I'm wrong, that obtaining this additional ten feet would provide the requisite access along the flowway to perform maintenance and reconstruction activities, if that makes sense.
And that doesn't get any structures?
It's all along the rear, ten feet.
It's a opposite drainage pipe.
Yeah, it runs parallel to the flowway, and it's.
There's some drainage pipe running parallel to the flowway.
So.
There's irrigation need, the irrigation line might be back there, and might be, as the gentleman indicated before, might be a smaller drainage pipes. That under the plat and under the, that's dedicated to the Carina Property Owners Association, that's why they're party to this kind of action.
So you're requesting to get this out of draft form and get it into a form that can be actually executed?
Oh, no, it's in a form that can be executed right now, in fact, it's been executed by WCI and by the Pelican Reserve Community Association.
Do the property owners individually, the twenty-four have to sign?
No, it's the association, my understanding is the association has approved that there, whether or not there are some internal discussions among the property owners, that their board, my understanding is that the board of Carina has approved this partial assignment of drainage easement.
That is correct, and there is some discussion from some owners that were not consulted and weren't happy, and I thought we'd talk to the board.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
I did a survey of homeowners along that stretch of the flowway, and I haven't gotten a lot of responses back, but I have gotten about nine, eight and seven, eight. And out of that, I've got one person who said they were aware of everything that was taking place, the other recipients said they weren't aware or involved with any of it. So the board at the HOA meeting was advised that the residents did not want any construction work back there, and if they could resolve it without that, they'd be happy. But it's questionable how many residents actually participated in that, that there was a survey, a meeting, or anything. So there is some contention, and I do agree that it's within the HOA board. But the questions are, what options were there? And as Mr. Gebhardt said, WCI said they would do the work and build the bank up as it's supposed to be, and there would be no issues at all. And now that there is this draft, or as it is now informed, that it can be adopted by you folks, accepting it as is. Tony told me we're saving, or the Carina HOA is saving roughly fifty thousand dollars.
No, I said the district.
The district is saving it?
No, I'll clarify that, if we go, if this is not executed, and we begin you on the path of the formal administrative hearing. The hearing, the trial, the expert testimony, Danny's time, Chris's time, deposition's discovery, will cost the district about fifty thousand dollars, I estimate, and we may not prevail. So that would, it could end up with the flowway being in the condition it is without the district having adequate access to maintain it.
Are all the twenty-four lots, Joe, east of Weir Three?
Yes.
They're all east of Weir Three?
Yes. And everybody was invited a year ago to put their order in the water, it's traveled for the last, over a year, and now when they've got an agreement, now some people are saying they didn't know about it, well, that's, this is generous. And I told them if they have a problem, it's with their HOA.
We had a meeting.
Yeah, it's the same, we had, everyone was invited, so some came, some didn't.
So at this point, this looks like the best deal we're going to get.
That's our recommendation, and again, for clarification on the twenty-eight, and I'm sorry, there weren't printouts, this was, provided a signed copy, it's been partially executed, it's been executed by Pelican Reserve Community Association, and been executed by WCI. And I have that in my office.
So do we need to make a motion to Tony to move this forward?
Oh, a motion to approve the partial assignment of drainage easements and.
That based in?
Yes, and bring back, because it's not signed yet by Carina. And so that once everything is signed, be held in escrow, then bring back the final signed document with the settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement would just be between WCI, South Florida, and the district, where the case would be dismissed, every walk away, and this is resolved.
So the motion is to only take this and submit this document to the association?
No, it's already been submitted.
It's already been submitted, so what's the motion for then?
I would say approve the form and substance of the attached partial assignment of drainage easements, that's already been approved by all three of the parties. And then authorize the chairman to sign it, and then authorize bringing back a settlement agreement for dismissal of the petition.
So move.
I'll say.
Questions? Put a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
How about a five-minute break, please? Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda, does anyone have any discussion on the consent agenda item?
I do.
All right.
May I begin?
Yes.
On page ninety, let me finish.
Notice there was a blank.
Not so much.
Say it again.
Start with page ninety.
I believe that it would be well if we had Mr. Danny Nelson's last name put in the agenda.
On page ninety?
No, it didn't.
It's line one thirty-three on the minutes for February twenty-first. So Mr. Tinkler responded, we can ask Danny at the next meeting.
There are two of them, line one thirty and line one thirty-three. Would you please order Mr. Nelson's last name to be put in the notes?
Yes.
Then I'd like to, if that's, if anybody else has anything else, run it finish.
Yep, are you finished?
I'm finished with the finish.
Okay, there's some misspelled of, on Met Tower. Okay, and I have already talked to Diane about the missing parts that I put in, I have the missing parts.
The times?
I have the times, I have the missing part on page eighty-one. Okay, I'm gonna give her my things, there's, like a fine, Met Tower was spelled wrong, I think it's on page eighty-three, might have been corrected, because.
What's the missing part on?
Uh, eighty-one. Eighty-one was, oh, it says due to recording equipment failure, sections of.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I have all that, there's a whole bunch there.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Flaherty, when you say you have all that, you have suggested language for that.
Suggested language that came from my notes.
Yeah, I would suggest that.
These come back?
Yeah, either come back or you read it out, so the board can incorporate, have those incorporated today.
Let's, let's have, let's have these brought back with the corrections.
Madam Chair, I noticed one correction I missed on it, on line one thirty-four, it was recessed until five thirty, it says five fifty. I just noticed that.
And that time that we left was four fifteen?
I think that sounds about right.
Yeah, I have it.
And so really, it would, I think it would be better if those, the minutes came back with the corrections, so we have all the information.
And Madam Chair, I suggest that Supervisor Flaherty provide those to Marilyn also, because I think she transcribed them.
Yeah, I was just gonna give them to Diane.
Diane to send to Marilyn?
So, just to be clear, we had equipment failure on both the hand recording and the video recording?
I don't know.
Didn't have the hand recorder up, the video recorder.
We just had the video recorder up.
Lost sound for a while, somehow in the transcription, we sent it down, we could hear parts of it here, but they couldn't pick it up on the machine.
So let's bring back the seventh and the twenty-first, because then we can get the corrections of the times and Mr. Nelson's name in there.
Madam Chair, can I ask one question?
Sure.
The attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Of the minutes, okay, I did get an email back, because I had asked about time wise for the minutes. And my next question is, if they could do the minutes by the Thursday, okay, I know our board book goes out on Thursday, could addendum, I mean, if they send the board book out, could they do an addendum with the minutes?
Or you can always update the agenda packet, if the board wishes.
With the minutes?
Or you were sending them out separately, outside the meeting book, and still post them online, is an option.
We could do that, okay, thank you. So that we would have our minutes, like, from this meeting and the next meeting, that's, so that we would exactly know what was stated without us having to remember a month ahead, or a month and a half back. Yeah, makes sense, thank you.
Okay, you had Heather?
I do.
May I proceed?
Yeah, we're beyond the minutes.
This is the financial statement on page one oh eight, revenue. Two-thirds of the way down, the revenue system, other miscellaneous revenue, we've already collected twelve thousand dollars. And I came by the life of me recall what that might be, could you help me out there, Stephen?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look that up to see, because we've pulled out most of all the other.
Right.
Miscellaneous big stuff, give me a couple minutes, I can find that out for you.
What did Kevin say here?
No, that's separate as well.
On page, on page one hundred.
Zero oh one.
Yeah.
The zero oh one general, on page one way, the agenda. He, he was asking where it was.
May I proceed?
Yeah. Go, I can.
On page one hundred and ten, and some other places too. Excuse me, I noticed that the payroll for salaries on several places, the year-to-date actual on salaries was much less than what I would have expected when we're third of the way through the year. Is that all as a result of one position not being filled?
I believe that there's one key one not filled.
I think there's two.
But there's two.
There's a total of two not filled?
Well, it just, I'm not sure on the periods of time.
Okay.
But obviously, but they're, both are affecting the current fiscal year, which I believe is your question.
Okay, well, I was just looking at this word on one ten, the first line, we're expecting, I mean, year-to-date budget, we're expecting thirty-five thousand, that's only sixteen, which caught my eye real fast, and then I went through the other pages, there's some other other.
It's the same, yeah, because those positions are allocated, they're allocated across different departments, that's why you're seeing them affect, you know, the different departments and different funds.
And that was my, really my question, is this a result of?
Yes.
One or two positions not being filled, positions that are charged to more than one fund?
That's correct, yes.
That said, yes, yes.
Yes. We have, we have three positions right now that were recently filled, are still open, the lake coordinator, the public works manager, we just finished, I mean, filled recently with Billy Shaw about two months ago. And we also have a position open at the pool with Peter Barrow retiring. So those three positions, and we have a halftime position that's really a recreation coordinator that hasn't been filled, so you don't see that money spent. And part of that salary allocation count, you would count the raises that were allocated, there wasn't any money allocated for raises, so those positions are mine.
You did, you showed there'd be money for yours, right?
Well, and to be clear, the stormwater system supervisor is a hundred percent in the department you're talking about right there, and some of the others are allocated, but that one is specific in, you know, the page, is, what is this, page one ten? A hundred percent of the salary would have gone to this department, so that's why this one is way down, you know, you're, you would expect that, you know, to be doubled, it's right now fifteen percent, it should be around thirty-three if everything was filled.
Also, and then line one, or page one hundred and fifty-two. Which goes into some of the explanation stuff.
Did you say, I'm sorry, did you say one fifty-two?
Yes, one five two.
Okay.
Trying to remember how far down it is, oh, yes. On August fourteenth of eighteen, we paid Bainscape a thousand and ninety-five dollars, I just wanted to point out that that's a lot of petunias.
Okay, I will confirm.
I'd like to say Latoros.
Latoros, maybe I'll check his.
Those are true.
They're close to the lake.
Yeah.
They're special, yeah, we'll get that corrected. That's all I have.
These are really good petunias. And did anybody else have anything else on five C or D?
Move approval.
Of five C and D?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then minutes will come back. Six A, license agreement for temporary staging area.
Chris, this is a request to, and I saw the chairman to sign a license agreement for a temporary staging area for Lake Ninety, I believe, is the remaining lake to be done. This is part of the property, the FPL easement, that we're still awaiting the deed from WCI.
Ninety-two's already done.
Right, so we're telling you to do ninety, it's, 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 sometimes these documents take a long time to clear, so that would, the recommendation is to authorize the chair to sign the license agreement.
So move.
Send it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Utility reserve transfer to operation group.
Sure, I'll handle that, and this is basically a request to transfer quarter million dollars from the utility reserves into our operational fund. We're a little over a million dollars in that reserve fund, but basically, we just have, we're spending a lot more money on maintenance and repair costs of our budgeting, so we're getting kind of close on that. And basically, what we're looking at using that money for is fifty thousand dollars for inventory of spare parts, which includes pumps, motor starters, mostly related to lift stations, but other portions too. And we've put this list together and done pricing on it, and doing a lot of price comparison, and it's amazing the difference in some items, where one company will have an electrical part for fifty-six dollars, and the other company, it's a hundred and nineteen dollars. But the spare parts, we'd rather have, because some of them are very difficult to get on a weekend or a time when something breaks down, you have to have it shipped in, you pay top dollar. We also had, had three projects, I mean, I put proposals together from WSP, and one of them we were looking at was get the engineering design work started to put in that fifth high-service pump for the irrigation system. Originally, there were five pumps at ten thousand gallon capacity on that system, several years back, they moved to the jockey pump, which is a smart move for low flow, so you don't have those big pumps cycling on and off. However, now our max flow is about eight thousand gallons a minute, not ten, and by next April, we will be over eight thousand gallons a minute. So it's one of the cheapest things we can do to bring the capacity of that irrigation system up. Now, we have this pump and part of this project in next year's capital improvement, so it wasn't something we're just bringing up, we're just trying to fast-track it, get the engineering done, and then next budget year, we'll have that money in the twenty-twenty-two to buy the pump.
And you talked about how this, this, this would be like a temporary moving of funds, that it would be, end up being replaced.
It would take us about four to five months to replace that capital reserve with the new rates in effect, and one thing we did with those rates is we added fifteen percent on the top, that goes right back to those renewal and replacements. So yes, we will be taking it out, but by the time your new fiscal year starts, you'll be back over a million dollars.
And, and really, Chris, these items, the, the amount and the items that you're discussing here, is what you and Kenny reviewed with us at the last board meeting, so this is just a, this is a follow-up to that.
Yeah, just formalize it, and another, another item we were talking about when you're looking at that irrigation quantity, it's another, it's a smaller project, sixty-five hundred dollars, but they just do a GIS analysis of the amount of clutter and acreage we're permitted for to irrigate, and this is just gonna update it. Because there are parts of Pelican that are included, but they were included on a, on a uniform type formula, and over in Pelican, there's some areas in Prado Pestoia where there's more common area than housing yard. And Pestoia, right now, we're running one point two million gallons a month, and they don't have a house out there yet. So, and that would be an exercise, then if we can demonstrate to the district that additional acreage, they'll give us additional.
To buy a house in that HOA.
Well, they're actually coming to us now and wanting to look at sub-metering some of those common areas and breaking them up between the subdivisions.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yeah, I was gonna move the motion, to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand from utility reserves to utility operations for additional renewal and repair and capital expenses in the fiscal, fiscal, yeah, two thousand and nineteen.
Send.
Okay, a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got that. And C, the bridge demolition, which we're requested to remove that, that'll be coming back to another meeting, and so D is pavement marketing, it's in Pelican Preserve.
And that's just a purchase order, they've gotten the permitting done, ready to move forward with the contractor, Mick Shea, and we got the purchase order ready to go, it's approved by P PAC, and.
Where is that? Ms. Ladies Rose?
Well, it's, it's, and after you're with the intersection, is they're just redoing some antiquated striping and putting up two stop signs, as they found out that permitting and engineering is quite a bit more expensive to pay for than paying for the stop signs.
Okay.
So do we need a motion on this, or is this?
It's, it's in their budget and ready to go, I was just bringing it to the board.
Okay.
Move approval.
Send.
I think he said that it was in your budget, we don't really need it.
Thirty-two oh five, I thought we did.
I would suggest, again, conserve the ten thousand.
Okay, okay, we have a motion in the session.
Hold my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment to district management services agreement.
Yes, and that, that's just an extension on the contract with Infomark, and at the last meeting, the board talked about granting an extension, and I'm also talking to them about changing some terms on their time it takes to get the minutes generated, returned to us, and also to look at some efficiencies or incentives. So we're gonna work with Mr. Concord and them to address a couple of these issues, see where we can look for those items and bring the agreement back to the board, but it's just a sixty-day extension to allow us time to.
Okay, so you need a motion to have this executed, so we can allow for sixty days' extension of the contract?
Yes.
I thought we did that in the last meeting.
I thought we did the actual extension, I don't think we did.
I think the board authorized bringing back to do that, but I think that can't be, now that you have it in.
Sixty days left to do?
It's effective as of February twenty-eighth.
That motion for the chair to just sign two-month extension to Infomax, you did five to zero?
We'll get that signed and send that to our mistake.
Okay, we'll take it. All right, and that brings me to supervisor comments.
May, may I, can you check one other?
Sure, sure.
I wanted to hand something out, and I was remiss in getting it on the board this time, but under the Infomark agreement, we also have an agreement coming up for the district council services.
Yeah.
And what I wanted to do is just hand out a copy now, that will go into the next agenda, but in case the board member wants to move it over out of the comments.
That'll give us time to review.
Connection.
Oh, and you'll pass this one that way, this is.
You get the red pen, you get the red pens also.
Sorry, I took.
All engineers have red pens, they don't have a term to use the red pen.
They have pencils.
Red pencil, that's correct. Our tech and engineers won't have a term to use red pencils or pens. I read, I have one.
Another extra.
Another extra? I think I'll take that extra and mark it up, I'll mark it up, one of, that's a fake, and he said that Tony gave him a heart attack.
No, I put.
Strike, strike.
I fear Margaret would have her tea and reading it, so she'd relax.
Okay, I will start with Mrs. Flaherty, supervisor comments?
Okay, um, I worked, we're, I'm discussing fence versus hedges, we're looking at the prices, and when we do the hedges, we would also undo the irrigation, okay? And the hedge would go on the other side of the fence, if I understand this, and the fence wouldn't come down, that's there, until the hedges grew. And it would extend over in front of the church, because people, I guess, come through, I use my hands, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, five through there.
What kind of fencing are we selling?
Well, we're not looking at hedges, some like cocoa plum.
To replace that white.
To replace it.
But you're saying you, you have fence and hedge?
But that fence that's there would stay, that white picket, ugly thing, would stay until the hedges have grown.
The hedges would be on the FPL side of the fence, or on the other way?
It would be rightward.
Behind it or?
It would be behind it, so that the fence is still there.
And out of the right way.
And out of the right way. Okay, so we've been discussing that.
And that's kind of, that's not just one row of plants, really, it'll be staggered, you know, three or four rows deep, so it'll be a nice visual barrier, and also keep people from going through there once it grows.
It'll be a little cheaper than a fence.
Anything else?
Yeah, are we up anywhere where the board rules, we would have discussed that, that was.
Most sections, no, we've not done a thing on those.
Okay, do you know when we might start something else?
I'm actually putting that in budget, because that might take some considerable time or legal work, or considerable amount of Tony's time, or he may want to decide to have somebody else work on this.
And what issue is that, Chris, I'm sorry?
The, yeah, board rules.
If the board wants to rewrite, it won't take that long to do that, depending on, if we can have a workshop on that, if that's what the board wants, maybe have a workshop, so we can have some consensus as to how to rewrite, as opposed to my just taking a wild stab.
Can, can we all get an updated copy of what we believe to be the current rules?
Oh, about the board's rules?
Yes.
For the procedural, like, for matters? Yes, I'll get those, make sure.
Good workshops.
It's great at any board meeting if you want.
It should happen.
Rules is a big rule.
When, when do our budget workshop start?
I'll forget the, yeah, we're going to hand out the calendar at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, so yeah.
We'll be starting them in April.
Send it, send the copy out to us, and we can workshop that the next meeting.
About budget and rules.
And we have the meeting protocol also, so I'll send those out.
That's a, that's it? Okay. Mr. Guy?
Nothing.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So, as we're potentially looking at the, the storage facility, um, the one that's going behind the soccer field, I'm looking at bids on that. I do want us to be prepared that if the bids come in around the amount that we've estimated, that we, that we prepare ourselves to potentially walk away from that deal. And the only reason I'm saying that is because the, the dollars have gotten, you know, excessive. But the real point of this comment is, if we do consider walking away from it, we would not, in my opinion, we would also have to, uh, close storage here on this site location. So if we don't proceed with the storage unit, uh, at the soccer field, we would more than likely have to, uh, stop allowing storage here on the facility, because with the new building, with the expansion, and I believe there's a, you know, I think there is, it's not in our best interest to have, uh, storage within our confines. So, I, I just want to throw it out there, so something for us to be thinking about, because that's, when, it's one thing to add an amenity to, to a community, it's another thing to take one away, so we just have to be prepared.
What's the contract we've signed with these people, or what guarantees do they have that that site's available?
There is none, they, they just.
A month, a month. All that, there is.
Yeah, I think, I think it is sort of like month to month, if I recall, it's been a long time since we did it.
So the quickest that we could have the, uh, ability to start construction that we would want them out is when, thirty days, I think would be reasonable. No, no, when, what, what's the track run right now, to actually start?
Oh, you mean, yeah.
Track run right now, looking at, uh, I think it was Danny said a May completion for the DO, and I'll have the proposal to purchase the building at the next board meeting.
So ninety, ninety days max.
Well, and here's another piece of that too, so, you know, we're not going to build that storage facility overnight. We may even want to consider having, you know, if we do decide to move in that direction, we still might want to decide to terminate, uh, storage on this property, well, because we're building the facility, and we, it would no longer be our policy to have public access to our, uh, to, to our facility. And if we decided to go forward, then we would, you know, again, give the individuals that were on the list or, or here.
First call.
First priority, but they would have to find temporary storage for that, for the gap of, of space. But regardless, you know, whether we do or don't, I think we are going to need to eliminate storage on this facility in conjunction with our site expansion.
I think that's one good point with regards to construction activity commenced on this site, the enhanced liability that occurs because of people wandering over, arguably. Also, the ability, because as you know, when you have a construction site, you can post a trespass, and if a construction site's a felon, and it might be more difficult to prosecute if somebody was to mosey over there, they'll say, well, we thought it was part of this whole, you know, we have our property here, we can get our boat, we can get our trailer, so from that perspective also, I think it's much cleaner to not have any other part of the site.
We're also missing a lot of money in equipment and things that are stored onsite, so, I mean, the, the security in this building and limiting access, I think. No, it's not good, so, I just want to bring up, so we need to be thinking about that, so, because that's, that's a procedure change, there's a policy change, there's also a philosophy change in that too, so I just want us to get in front of it. And the other thing is, you know, I do want to congratulate Chris for, uh, for the two years that he's been in this role. I think he's worked really hard, and there's been, you know, things that he's been able to take on and learn, and, uh, but also, there's still always more to learn and continue to push himself to identify his, you know, opportunities and to improve, so I, I, I'm glad that we were able to get done what we did today. But I also would strongly recommend, uh, we as a board, that we are sensitive to staff wages, their benefits, and compensation. This is something I do for a living, uh, and the three things that can probably kill an organization the fastest is, you know, management at the top, and, uh, and staff turnover, and, uh, your, your culture. So if we, one of the things I will, I will say, Chris has done a really good job, is, is looking at staff, bringing in, uh, individuals, putting them on a growth path, uh, being very specialized, uh, in, uh, in these, in these roles. But as we're investing in them coming in and cross-training them and doing all these things, we need to make sure that they're going to be here two years, five years, six years, ten years down the road, because of our investment. So the best way to do that is, one, have a great working environment, uh, have opportunities for growth, three, you've got to pay people. So, I just, I want to put that out there, and if it comes down to budgeting, if it's dollars that really is hanging us up and, and giving our employees, um, you know, increases or, or getting them, uh, to level set that they need to get in, that we need to make that part of the budgeting process. We had no problem approving thousands and millions of dollars on this board, you know, over the past two years. If we can't set aside some, some money to make sure that our, our staff is being, uh, being compensated appropriately, then I think we need to take a step back and look at our, our priorities a little bit.
Well, and I think that that's where we're going to lean on, uh, our district manager to tell us what his needs are staffing-wise, and what compensation he's, he has with those needs.
I agree with everything Mr. Banks says, I also want to add recognition is a very important part of the, uh, taking, taking care of yourself.
I agree.
And that's, that's a great add-on, and I will say that, uh, it, along the same lines, justification and proper data to back it up is very important too. I think, and even, and I had a great point, I had no problem with him asking for some of the paperwork and, and some of the, you know, justification, I fully understand that. That is one thing that we'll need to do, Chris, as we move forward, is supply justification. It may not be salary rec, you know, here's what the industry is paying, because I, I do agree, we're not always apples to apples, but if we're going to, uh, make recommendations for, for pay, we need to just have a little bit of justification behind it, and I just think that should be pretty easy, but, so that, that's it for me, that's all I have.
A couple of things, Flowway Maintenance, Colonial, I haven't been over there for a couple of months. Are they getting that, uh, Flowway cleared out up to I seventy-five?
No, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for it to air back, though, and they're going to get started, DBI folks.
Okay, and then the other one is, uh, again, I haven't been over to Hampton Park, haven't had any phone calls. The littoral maintenance of keeping it and maintaining it to that four to eight-foot strip, is Aquagenics doing that?
They're, they're moving forward to, uh, some of those larger areas, they've been cutting them back where they've extended as part of their regular maintenance.
So that is being done.
Yeah, and we have a couple of ponds over there too, that we're going to be, uh, pulling some out in some areas and trimming them up, but same thing, keep that fifteen and a half foot wide path in there.
The phase-two facilities plan, as I recall, uh, that went to, uh, the state with an estimated price tag of what, eight? Eight million, is that what it was for the next thirteen ponds? Eight, eight and a half million? Okay, I've got a lot of people over in Gateway Greens asking when their ponds are going to be done, and they're in that phase-two group, so.
And we just have to do the inclusion form, and I'll get that to them for spring of next week, and actually going to Tallahassee for a FASD event the day after the legislative, I'm going with Joe Disserbo over to FDEP in Florida Rural Water to talk to them about grants and loans and other opportunities.
Excellent. Anything else? All right, then, I am going to call this meeting adjourned at five thirty-two. Thank you.
You gonna fly the state's new plane up to Tallahassee?
Is that that one that has to land every time it gets up off the ground?
No, Rick Scott left his plane, he got a new one.
They're using that captured drug.
Scott, I thought, oh, he wouldn't fly that.
No, he wouldn't fly the state's, it's like Rockefeller.
He's holding you in there.
Fire force too.
He wants a jet.
One of my favorite stories. Remember the old plumbing busters? Mr. Chris?
Yeah.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes, I've got a couple of things I need to finish, because the meeting, Chris, is something I could sit to, or you talk, I want to know about.
I'd just like to know what's involved.
You know, I, I was trying to figure the plans out the other day, look at it, you know, see what it was made out of, the size, and get that far with the plans on the size.
There were some events.
Some donations, some change of water. But that's why we went next up, they didn't stand. What they did over there. Lucky it was a three-dime.
Yeah, yeah, I get a job, turn my back, the car's gone. Leave it for them.
Hey, if they could have stolen, I would have been happy to have it.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really, that's county property, so, that's county property. We, they allow our GPS by kids' soccer program to use it, and it's really nice to be compared to standards in, in the area. Four months out of the year, it's over flow park.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Help me up or I have what you want.
They're pretty beat up, but it only takes about a month, maybe a month and a half, two months at the most. And the, you know, the staff over there is good.
But you know what's amazing, I didn't realize, maybe all the parking, uh, with the west that we were normal mothers? I'd just be interested. Is there a parking at Gateway too?
Oh, we got, uh, the tractor out there.
You know, I should have your job.
Gateway Greens.
I'd just like to know what that might be. You're on every train back then.
Hey, Chris, take care. And they've gone up. Oh, yeah, that was a steal, man.
I know.
We talked about a great investment.
I keep, you had it somehow, he promised to us. This one, this one, we got our driver, your younger husband, I'm hearing all that.
And people are making a killing over here with, uh, doing seasonal rentals. And it's, a lot of it is for, you know, there's been some Red Sox players that have, you know, done it here, but staff, but, you know, people that come in just for the.
Or like for concerts or for charity. We'll have fun tonight, right? Okay, you got, Chris, you have an idea of the floor charge, the work from the mic, or, so we can get that in court?
Uh, we, uh, we talked about it, but I, I have not had a chance.
Okay, and it's called working?
Yeah, I mean, I, this, so this new job, I've got, I've got work all over. I mean, right now, I'm dealing with Hong Kong, and India, and Prague, you try setting up a call with Hong Kong, Prague, and the US. And who has to sacrifice is me, so I'm up at one, two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, my gosh.
So, Hong Kong can get their.
Hong Kong is tomorrow, Prague is maybe a little.
So, if it's, if I want a one or two o'clock call, it's going to be seven o'clock in Prague, and it'll be about two or three o'clock in the afternoon in Hong Kong.
Oh, my gosh.